Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October first, two thousand twenty-four study session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present this evening. We are here this evening to discuss the interlocal agreement on the Deschutes Estuary Restoration Project. So why don't we get started at the end of the table with a round of introductions?
Jim Cooper, City Council.
Lisa Parsley, City Council.
Robert Vanderpoel, City Council.
Danny Madron, City Council.
Clark Gilman, City Council.
Stacy Ray, Assistant City Manager.
Debbie Sullivan, Assistant City Manager.
Anne Quinn, I used to hear pronouns, I'm pleased to be the Mayor Pro Tem of the Olympia City Council.
Jay Bernie, City Manager.
Mark Barber, City Attorney.
Anne Larson with the State of Washington, I'm the Project Director for the Estuary Restoration, pleasure to be here.
And I'm Sarah Rich, I'm a Project Director with Echo Northwest and have been helping to facilitate the Funding and Governance Work Group and Funding Strategy for the project.
Hi, everyone, Tessa Gardner-Brown, Principal at Floyd Snyder and Consultant Team Project Manager.
And Dave Merchant, Assistant Attorney General.
Thank you all so very much. So before we turn it over to Anne and the team, I just want to turn it over to City Manager Bernie for a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and council members. Tonight is a big night. Tonight is a culmination of about seventy-eight years' worth of work by the state, the Squawson Island Tribe, the port, lot, the county, Olympia, and Tomwater to come together around a shared agreement for moving the estuary forward. In a moment, Anne and her team are going to share with you the specifics of an interlocal agreement, which really formalizes a memorandum of understanding that we all signed a year ago. Signing the ILA is a big step forward in our commitment to partnership in making the estuary a reality. It is our commitment to shared maintenance over the long term. Tonight is a significant milestone, and I am pleased that Anne and her team are here to share it. And with that, I'll turn it over to Anne.
Thank you. All right. So today, as Jay mentioned, we're going to give you a bit of an update and talk a little bit about the interlocal agreement, but at first, I've got a couple of opening remarks, so. I think everybody knows that this is such a unique project. We're restoring an estuary in the middle of an urban setting, and that's really special. We know this to be one of the largest estuary restorations in the nation in an urban setting. And that's important because we can actually show that the urban and the natural can coexist and they can thrive. And we're doing this here in our capital city, in the city of Olympia, which is pretty amazing. There's so many opportunities here, both with civic education, transportation, ecological benefits that we can see from this and realize. And your partnership is so important to that, and it's exciting that we're ending with the city of Olympia just because of the partnership that we have. At the center of all of this, it's really about restorative justice, and I think we all know that. It's exciting to be partnering with the Squawson Island Tribe throughout this process. And so it's a legacy process, excuse me, a legacy project, and yeah, we're just super excited to be here. So I'm going to run you all through some initial project context slides. We've been using these for the most part in a lot of our presentation. Then we're going to jump into a project overview by Tessa, she'll provide some information on benefits. Sarah will talk us through the interlocal agreement, providing an overview, and then we'll talk about the signature process and next steps. So. So, let's see here, okay. Here we go. Okay. So historically, freshwater from the Deschutes River would mix with saltwater from Bud Endlet over expansive tidal flats. This area is rich with history and is the southern terminus of the Puget Sound. The Deschutes Watershed is approximately two hundred and seventy square miles. The lower two hundred and sixty acres of the watershed were significantly disrupted in the nineteen fifties when the state built the dam at the mouth of the Deschutes River. Since that time, there have been chronic water violations, or excuse me, water quality standard violations, and sediment has accumulated up to thirteen feet in certain areas. There are more than a dozen known invasive species, including the New Zealand mud snails, that have actually caused the water border to be closed today. As I mentioned, the Deschutes Estuary has a longstanding cultural and spiritual significance to local tribes, and particularly the Squawson Island Tribe. The Squawson Island Tribe considers the people and the land of Deschutes Estuary a statehouse. They have been involved in the planning efforts since the nineteen nineties, and they're a key partner with us today. The area has also historically been used by Chinese Americans. Chinese immigration in Olympia began in the nineteen hundreds, and Chinatown was established along the waterfront of the estuary. The community built a series of houseboats on the shoreline. This area was referred to as Little Hollywood, and it was ultimately removed as part of the long process to construct Capitol Lake. The project also has a rich maritime history. The old Olympia Brewing Company operated in Tomwater Historic Park, and vessels would make their way up two miles the waterway to the brewery at the base of Tomwater Falls. The Olympia Yacht Club was established at its current location in nineteen twelve, and the maritime presence has been growing increasingly since that time. We've had additional marinas, we've had a sailing club, and other boat launches nearby. And so in modern times, Capitol Lake has been really embraced by the community. I think you all realize that with all the events that we have here downtown, it is the heart of downtown Olympia, and it's really a space for congregation and community. It's also our capital city, and the development of the Capitol Campus has significantly influenced the landscape over time, in particular, the city of Olympia. In eighteen ninety-three, the initial visioning began to design and construct the Capitol Building. In nineteen eleven, Wilden White submitted a plan that would perch the Capitol Building on the hillside and orient all the future planning efforts towards the water and the mountains below. Heritage Park was also designated as an extension of the Capitol Campus. There are features throughout the park that are intended to represent the rich history of the state and transition that experience to the campus upland. And as you all know, in two thousand twenty-two, DES identified the estuary restoration as the management approach that had the greatest range of benefits and was the most supported by our stakeholders. And so we began in this process together. And when we do that, we must think about the rich history of this place, the natural history, the tribal history, the settlement community, the maritime community, our civic community, and the Capitol Campus. It's really our goal to represent all of this history in a space and do it in a way that balances all of our shared interests. Were you pointing at something? What you got there?
I was just pointing out the shoreline in the lower left corner. When you look at the Capitol, and that's like around the middle of downtown is the beach. It's pretty amazing.
That is pretty cool. We've got some great historic photos. And so when we look at this, water is really our unifying force. All of our history over time in Olympia has brought us to the water, from harvesting from the water, crossing the water, to either side of Olympia, the water is what really brings us together in Olympia. And it's also the prominent view of Capitol Campus, and it serves all of the residents here. So we are going to just shift to Tessa, I think, to give a project overview. So, Tessa, please.
All right. I'm just recalling the last time I was here in this room, and that was presenting to the City Council during the draft EIS process and getting questions about the analysis. And you all were an early supporter of the estuary and have been a continued strong supporter of the estuary. And so what we want to do in this segment of the presentation is provide a reminder to all of the parties around the table of the key components of the estuary and the benefits that are realized when the estuary is constructed. And although the interlocal agreement is a component of the project, it is a document that helps to show and memorialize the support that is really, has always been needed to move this project forward. So the interlocal agreement itself focuses on a piece of work that happens after construction, but it is fundamental to getting us to that construction milestone. And support around the table was part of what we weighed during the EIS process to make the decision. And as Anne mentioned, the estuary was the project alternative that had the greatest local support. And this document helps us to demonstrate that in a tangible way for all of our stakeholders, including the legislature that Anne and this group will be working with in the future. So I know that you all have good familiarity with the project, but allow me to go through the high-level components of estuary restoration and then pause to see if you have any questions. We do still get questions about whether we're constructing other features, and so it's helpful to run through this. So I should say also that the figure at left is a plan view of the habitat restoration that is proposed and was included in our fifteen percent design deliverable that we submitted to Anne and the state and to the city of Olympia, and I'll describe that process in a bit in the middle of the year. And so we also get to say that we are advancing design of estuary restoration, and it's just so exciting to be here. So estuary restoration includes a new Fifth Avenue Bridge, and we'll talk about that in good detail tonight, and I'll show you some imagery around that. And the new Fifth Avenue Bridge is the critical component that then allows us in the future, after we've constructed the rest of the project, to remove the dam and the existing Fifth Avenue Bridge. As we're constructing the new Fifth Avenue Bridge to the south of the existing dam and bridge, we'll have a significant dredging event to reestablish the main channel of the historic Deschutes River. So as Anne mentioned, every year, there's significant sediment deposition that has been captured behind the dam, and we will dredge about five hundred thousand cubic yards of material and place that dredged sediment along the shoreline. That's a really important feature of the project because that placement of sediment allows us to build inner tidal habitat, salt marsh habitat, that's really important to salmon and supports other fish that salmon rely on. And we can create expansive habitat across those two hundred and sixty acres. Recreation is also a very important component of this project, and so active restoration will be restored right in the heart of downtown Olympia, adding to the other suite of recreations that you have, but really providing that water-based recreation. That can be fairly limited, so there will be boardwalks, water access opportunities, and fishing facilities. And in our recent round of engagement with the community, we've heard so much excitement about people being able to fish in the Deschutes Estuary, so we like sharing that little tidbit out. In addition to this being a significant estuary restoration project, there are also a number of infrastructure components. So in addition to the new Fifth Avenue Bridge, the Percival Cove Bridge would need to be replaced. There's about seventy stormwater outfalls that discharge into the project area that would be improved as a result of the project. That is a lot of outfalls. And then there are primary utilities that run along all three of our bridges, so Fifth Avenue Bridge, Percival Cove Bridge, and the Marathon Park Bridge. At the end of construction, the Fifth Avenue Dam would be removed to reintroduce tidal flow, and that's when we start to see all of those benefits come into the project area. And in the future, there would be maintenance dredging in West Bay. And that is a really critical component of the project that was added during the EIS when we really understood that we needed to find a way for that natural and urban to coexist, as Anne was describing. And the way that we, the opportunity that we identified in the EIS was that removing sediment from the navigational areas downstream of the project area in West Bay allows for the marinas and the port to remain operational and to have that vibrant maritime waterfront that is so intrinsic to Olympia and the character of Olympia. And so maintenance dredging is a commitment through two thousand fifty and is the basis of the ILA, as I mentioned earlier, and Sarah will go into more detail around. So, any questions on key components of the estuary restoration? Okay. I'll share some renderings. So this is existing conditions from the law of some memorial. And it's so cool to be at this place where we can take the engineering plans and transition those into rendering. So these are based on the fifteen percent design, the habitat grading that you'll see, and the channel location and everything. So this is a view of the conditions that would happen most of the time, so mean sea level under the estuary restoration. And maybe you're pointing at all those shorebirds that you see in the picture. And it's so exciting, when we had the lake drawdown in January, we saw such a return of the shorebirds, and that was so wonderful to see, and we really do anticipate that return in the future. So Anne encouraged us to make sure that those were well represented in the rendering. More birds. So this habitat that you're seeing along the shoreline here is, as I mentioned, actually following the contour lines that I was showing just in that plan view. And then you'll see the new Fifth Avenue Bridge, which we'll show you a little bit closer in the next one. And this is a rendering of conditions at low tide. It looks pretty beautiful, and we're very excited about that. And then now we're moving down to the middle basin, so this is just north of I-5. Looking at the, you know, in the very background of the picture, center, you can see the railroad trestle. These are conditions that we anticipate at mean sea level, and so the main channel is actually headed off left, and then there are side channels that would develop toward the right or the center of this image. And then low water. One point that I think I want to make, especially for the city of Olympia, I'm going to head back to this overview here, is one of the key things that we are doing with our design team is figuring out the right balance of estuary restoration and, you know, dry ground and how this works in an urban context. And so, for example, in the north basin, thinking about a planting palette that will support continued views to the Capitol or continued views from the bridge to downtown. And in the middle basin, making sure that there's the right level of riparian habitat that supports fish and habitat functions, but not so much riparian habitat that is making people want to go out onto those dry areas and hang out there, which would then reduce the value that we're getting from those areas. So there's been this continued goal of the design team to find that right balance in design, fitting this in an urban setting. Okay. Oh, we just get to go through them again now. Okay. So now we'll show you a couple of renderings of the bridge. So this is the conceptual design for the new Fifth Avenue Bridge. I'm going to pause on this for a second. And the first thing I want to talk about is the design partnership that we've developed with the city of Olympia. And so at the beginning of the design process, we worked with Jay and Sophie and Mark to really figure out the right level of engagement during design so that the Fifth Avenue Bridge was co-designed or coordinated with city of Olympia as it was designed. Because the intention, and Sarah will get to this when she goes through this, is after construction that the bridge becomes an asset of the city of Olympia. There's a subsidiary agreement to the interlocal agreement for conveying that asset to the city of Olympia. But really what the subsidiary agreement focuses on right now is the partnership that we have through the design process. And it commits that at each of the design milestones, that during design, we stay in good coordination with meetings as needed to ensure that we're progressing consistent with city design criteria. And at each design milestone, that the city of Olympia also reviews the bridge design, and that's pretty rare. Typically, you would get the design during the permit applications or the permitting process, but starting at fifteen percent design, the city transportation group and Mark had the opportunity to review in detail, following a series of meetings we had already had with them leading up to that design deliverable. And the subsidiary agreement intends to continue that process through design so that this is really a reflection of work from the DES side, but influence from the city side, too. That said, there's also a lot of really cool stuff on this bridge. And this is also a reflection of what we're hearing from the community. And the community has really expressed a strong interest in having, using this bridge as a place for pause, as a place for viewing back to the Capitol Campus. There's an oculus in the middle of the bridge, and Anne just introduces that oculus so well that I think she should do it rather than me.
Thank you, Tessa. Well, I think also, just the bridge in and of itself, it is a symbol, if you will. If you look between the two bridges, there are similarities, they are siblings, but they're not twins. And so you see more of the curvature of the new Fifth Avenue Bridge with this undulating curve. It starts to become a bookend to the Capitol Campus with views looking back at the campus and the campus looking back at that. And then, of course, we have this oculus, a hole in the bridge, if you will, at the deepest part of the channel, which is an amazing opportunity for civic education. So we have ten thousand kids that are coming to our Capitol Campus on an annual basis. And here we have an opportunity to tell the story of not just the statehood of Washington, but the natural history of Washington, too. And so that becomes that bookend. If you notice, there's undulating stairs there as well. For those of you who have spent time on the Capitol steps with the very structured, engineered-type stairs, this is more undulating to take you down closer to the water. And then there's opportunities for us to program art. Like Squawson, we're looking at vertical art installation on the bridge and other elements for civic education. So it's great opportunity, and also when we think about, it's an extension of our park system. We have marathon and heritage, and you see the park actually coming out on the bridge and more of a, you know, space for people to congregate. So it's really, truly going to be something special. So it's super exciting. Thank you, Tessa, for allowing me.
Total. All right, I'll get through these next couple. So plan view, that I don't think we need to say too much more there. And then if you're in a kayak, which we'll be restoring the ability to do that, this might be what you see. And that oculus, and, you know, as Anne mentioned, this is centered, is intended to be centered over the middle of the main channel, and that would allow for folks to see salmon as they come back every year. Don't take away from this that the materiality is set in stone, we're still at conceptual design.
And just real quick, to pause back, maybe go back to, to talk about the bridge itself, which has pedestrian access. We're looking at really making this a safe place for folks that are walking. I know, all of you know about that terrifying intersection, we're making it better. You can see on the far side there, there's a new roundabout there, and so that's a better way for traffic to flow, too. But yeah, you see this really nicely divided sidewalk, and then there'll be bike and pet access, too. So I just want to highlight that, it's really important value for Olympia and also for the state, so.
Okay. Oh, I like that we keep going back and forth through these. Okay. So I'm just going to do one slide. Yeah, let's go back. Okay, let's talk about the benefits that would be realized after project construction, and then I will pass it shortly after that to Sarah. One of the things that we've been doing is transitioning to this imagery in our recent presentations because what we think it does is really helps to set this in space in terms of its regional context and influence throughout the area. And that it is the heart of, or part of, the heart of the city of Olympia. And that's part of the story that we tell when we talk about this project. And related to that, the city of Olympia has been at the table as part of the CLAMP, or Capitol Lake Adaptive Management Planning Process, that started in the late nineteen nineties, attempting to find the right solution for this. So really, the partnership with the city of Olympia being at the table is decades long, twenty-five years long, and extending before that in a more informal format. Okay, so after construction, there would be two miles of estuary and habitat restored that is so important to salmon species, the species that depend on those salmon and the species that the salmon depend on. The removal of the dam, I'm just going to go down these benefits here. The removal of the dam itself lowers maximum flood elevations across the city of Olympia by one foot. That is critical, that is so important, such an important resiliency benefit to the city of Olympia. And we are also working to incorporate a new habitat resiliency feature, climate resiliency feature along the Heritage Park shoreline, consistent with the Olympia Sea Level Rise Response Plan. The project will also address chronic water quality violations and respond to the TMDL. That's super important because it avoids increased regulations to lot, and lot would have to bring new treatment online earlier and pass that down to ratepayers. The project would reintroduce active recreation, as I have described, and it's just such a shame seeing this picture and knowing that this whole area has been closed to active public use since two thousand nine. Anne introduced the importance of this project relative to restorative justice for the Squawson Island Tribe, and they're a key partner to us. And the partnership with you guys, and the last thing, of course, is the maintenance dredging that would maintain a working and recreational waterfront that is so important to generating economic activity and social value. Okay, so now what about Funding and Governance Work Group? In two thousand fifteen, when the process to identify the long-term management approach was sort of reinvigorated, the legislature provided funding to DES, and it included a requirement for DES to bring together the group of entities that are shown in that table outright to look and consider general support for shared funding by those entities. And then in each legislative appropriation since then, they have had an advancement of that requirement. So that has been the impetus for this shared funding, and I think it's a recognition of the shared benefits that we receive from the project. And with that, I'll pass it to Sarah.
Thank you, Tessa. Okay. So when the Funding and Governance Work Group initially convened in two thousand and sixteen-ish, they established a set of guiding principles for their work. And you see that original set of guiding principles right here. The ILA is really rooted in these guiding principles, and its structure directly reflects many of these, you see here. It provides a dedicated funding source, and it provides that for the infrastructure that the project creates through the way that it establishes future ownership and maintenance responsibilities. And it also provides that security and funding for the maintenance dredging. It is a shared distribution of costs, and it balances between the state that created the problem and those that benefit from the solution. And so you'll see in those coupled numbers, two and three. And then as I go into in a minute, it provides manageable governance structure. And that was really important as the group deliberated the many potential options for how this thing would be governed and really not wanting to create an entire new level of bureaucracy. So it is on the minimal side of that, as we'll describe here in a few minutes. And importantly, really, through the funding and governance process over the last seven to eight years, that process has demonstrated the commitment to this project. And via the ILA itself, the participating entities are committing through the long term to this collaborative process, which is a direct response to that legislative mandate. And that response and that commitment that is now, that hopefully will be enshrined in the ILA, assigned ILA, is so important for continuing to bolster the momentum that this project has gained for funding and ultimately implementation, getting us to that construction and completion with the dam removal. So as I mentioned, manageable governance was among the guiding principles here. And this table, which is in the ILA, shows how the responsibilities and both in terms of process and in terms of ownership are divided among the members of, parties to the ILA, members of the Funding and Governance Work Group. So instead of creating a new body that will govern all of the assets that this project is creating, is building, those assets, the infrastructure, will be divided out to the entities that ultimately, that it makes sense to have that ownership and maintenance responsibility. So most relevant to this group here is the future ownership of the Fifth Avenue Bridge. And Tessa talked about that, that is the subject of the subsidiary agreement there, as well as the commitments towards that design process in the interim. The other features and ownership pieces that will be divided out are the boardwalks for the city of Tomwater. There is recreation infrastructure that the state of Washington and its various agencies will be taking on, including both the boardwalks and the water access points and any of the decontamination that needs to happen as a result of reintroducing that water access for boating. And then there are responsibilities that this agreement enshrines and divides responsibilities out. So the state of Washington is taking on the project management role for the sediment management that, in the marinas and the marina access areas. And that includes the BATHI, the design permitting and contract management of those dredges in the future, in those areas. The port is maintaining its responsibility over dredging in its berth. So those two responsibilities for making sure that the dredging happens, that this group, that the groups collectively will be funding, goes to those two entities. that this group, that the groups collectively will be funding, goes to those two entities. The agreement does create an oversight of all of the, an oversight group called the Deschutes Estuary Coordinating Steering Committee, sorry, the DES. And that will provide oversight for those project management feature functions and provide oversight for, you know, how, how things, ultimately, it's the decision-making body there. And then the last feature that is really important is that Thurston County will take over the local account treasurer. So the way that we've structured, had to structure the money so that the local accounts are safe from being swept by the legislature is that all local money will go into a local account. The state money, the state contribution to this long-term sediment management will be held in a state account. And then there's a third pot of money that is the contribution from the marinas. And we'll talk about that in a minute. But with those three account structures, all, the money has to be in each account before any money can be taken out of the accounts. And that ensures that there is this collective funding responsibility. And Thurston County will be the local account treasurer here. The tribe has, will be potentially participating in long-term habitat maintenance and monitoring. And another really valuable contribution that the tribe is providing right now is as a, as a partner in seeking funding. And they actually were the sponsoring agent, or organization for the NOAA grant that we are in the process of signing a cooperative agreement for right now, for six and a half million dollars to continue to support the design. So that was really exciting and go ahead, Anne.
Yeah, I can't even, for the folks that joined me in DC, I cannot stress that enough, how wonderful it was to have the Squawson Island Chairman Peters and Ray Peters with us. They opened up doors that I think would have been really challenging for us to open, and they continue to do so. And as Sarah mentioned, the monies that we received from NOAA, there's another round of funding. And I think we have great opportunities to continue receiving money from NOAA. So I just want to highlight and just take a moment to just really appreciate the work Squawson Island has done. So yes.
Okay. So I mentioned that there is funding coming from the marinas. And this helps to explain why here. The, the figure on the left there shows sediment deposition under current conditions, the no action. And the red shading there is the, is the sediment deposition. You can see that some sediment is trans, is moving through the dam and is depositing there in the areas where the marinas are. The thing here. Yeah, I know. There it is. So right up in here. You can see then, under the, when the dam is removed, under the estuary conditions, that darker red shows up there where the marinas are located. And so the marinas have responsibility for, you know, under the terms of their leases, have to, and just to maintain business, have to dredge under current conditions. And they will be responsible for continuing at that level that they would have under their new leases, under existing conditions. And so that what the, in our local agreement covers, the funding contributions from the local entities is the additional, the cost of removing the additional sediment that you see here in the darker red. And this, oops, this image over here shows the areas that will be dredged. And you can see the green here is the Olympia Yacht Club. The modeling indicates that that would be, need to be dredged approximately every six years on average. And then the other areas here would be every 12 years, including the Port of Olympia vessel births there. Okay, so this shows the total cost of the project and the different components. And one thing that I want to highlight before we move on into the numbers there is that this ILA is an agreement that has a term, a termination date of 2050. It goes through 2050. And at that point, that date aligns with the, the DNR, the leases that the marinas have with DNR. And it was a natural endpoint at which time the, the ILA parties would come back together and decide what happens next in a really intentional way. So the agreement doesn't prescribe what happens after 2050, but it requires the group to come together at some point before then and say, what's working? What's not working? And what do we want to do next? And so the other piece of this that I want to show is the different line items for the cost here. We have the design and permitting. And as I mentioned, that is being funded by the state and, darn it. Thank you. That is being funded, it's the state's responsibility. But is, that money is partly being funded with federal dollars and with the help of the tribe. The construction, 350 million there, is also the responsibility of the state. So the state, in that, when you look at the total costs of the project, takes the lion's share of the cost. I think we, I think it's around 97% of the total project cost. The pieces that is the subject of this long-term agreement are, is really the last line there. But the line above it shows the cost associated with the baseline sediment management that would be the responsibility of the marinas. And a portion of that is also the responsibility of the port in their vessel births. So what the locals are taking on and agreeing to fund here is the 18.6 million in 2022. And that was distributed across the members of the Funding and Governance Work Group in equal shares with two exceptions. One of those is for the city of Olympia. And that recognizes, when we think about this from an equity perspective, that the city of Olympia is, is experiencing a disproportionate share of the benefits of implementing this project because of its adjacency to the, to the estuary restoration and its adjacency to, or the importance of the marinas and the port continuing to operate there on the doorstep of the city. And then the other piece of that is there was no allocation to the Squawson Island Tribe. But again, they're an important funding partner in other ways. So that brings us to the actual numbers that you're agreeing to under the ILA. And what is highlighted there in the yellow box is the Olympia column. What that shows is the sediment management cost estimate from the 2022 EIS. And it is escalated to four and, at four and a half percent annually over the term of the ILA. So we recognize that four and a half percent escalation reflects some of the uncertainty and conditions that we've seen over the last few years, particularly related to construction and dredge expenditures. And it's there to ensure that the money will be there when we'll, when we need it in the future. We've got a long time before this dredging begins. But there is a provision in the ILA that allows the DES to review that escalation assumption after five years and on a, on a recurring basis to, and to change it if they deem that appropriate given market conditions. So that is the one place where the total cost can be changed as the DES determines is appropriate. And I think that that should cover it here. Oh, that's, yes, that's come up in some of our. The payments do not begin here. You'll see the first payment line is in 2027. So the payments begin after construction funding is sufficient to remove the dam, is secured. So that's important because, for your planning and when it will need to, when your contributions will need to begin. But we wouldn't expect those conditions. And the ILA says we won't expect those payments to begin until there's reasonable understanding that the project will actually need to happen when the dam is removed.
So that means we're rooting to be paying something in 2027 because that means we're funded.
Exactly. That means things are moving along as scheduled, which is good news.
We will still be alive.
Okay, Anne, I will take it back to you unless there are any other questions.
You guys are being easy on us here. Well, this is our last slide, and then we can chit chat and have questions too. But this is just to show how deliberate we've been with our schedule. So we first met in March, and it was pretty daunting to think that we would get to the end of the year and sign this legal document with all the important players around the table. You know, meeting with Jim, Danny, and Jay, it seemed like we had a long ways to go. But we were starting with all the good work of the MOU. So the process that we had, we would bring the entities together, the jurisdictions internally together. And then we would take that information back out to the larger group. And so you see that internal, external with all the different parties. And what that did is really honed in on key concerns from the jurisdictions. And then we're able to have that in a very public and transparent way. And that process allowed us to get to where we are, which is 1st of October, 2nd of October. And we're ready to sign this. You are actually our last presentation of all of the jurisdictions, which is in and of itself a celebration that we've made it to this far. But this is just really to show, it was deliberate, there was intention, and we were successful. And so with that, I think that is our last one, so.
Thank you all so much. So I'll open it up for questions and comments. But before I do, I do just want to turn it over to councilmembers Cooper and Madrone, if you have comments. The two members are the city's representatives on the Funding and Governance Work Group that was just mentioned earlier. So if you have anything you'd like to share, feel free.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to count our blessings for having alternates here. It was really helpful. This would not be where it is without Councilmember Madrone. My workload made it hard sometimes to meet the schedule. And we got there because we had two councilmembers going through the process from the beginning. So thank you for doing the, a lot of the work. I really appreciate that. And I think we would be remiss to not thank Rich Hoy from the city's perspective. We're all working off of the foundation that he helped lay in that MOU. And I came into this with a hard eye for an MOU that I didn't get to help negotiate and wanted a different outcome. And brought everything that that means from Councilmember Cooper to this team. And they were amazing. Like every single question I had, every single weird idea I had, every single time I said I was frustrated and didn't like, that the city manager kept telling me, what I tell my child is, you get what you get and you don't throw a fit. And, and, and I, and I got there. And, and it was hard, but I, I think fundamentally for me, it's just hard to take something that doesn't have a funding source tied to it. And so from our perspective, that's a difficult position to be in. But from the perspective of the estuary, which is why we're here, it's a great place to be in. And having gotten this far, so I want to say thank you to all of you for putting up with me. I, I really do. I appreciate it and I appreciate the beautiful design. Like I have not heard a single complaint since those designs came out. And there's a lot of people in Olympia that for some reason have complaints. And so it's, it's really nice to see those beautiful renderings and know that, yeah, there's gonna be some sediment, but we're gonna take care of it. And we're gonna do it as a group. And I'm just so proud of the team and where we are and that the, you know, especially that the tribe has been there with us through every step. I was talking to Anne before the meeting just about some of the doors the tribe is helping open. And we've been in, in Washington DC advocating and it's exciting. It's really exciting. And I feel like there's a huge, huge amount of hope now that we can move to the next phase. And thank you for, for everyone for getting us here.
I, I just want to also say, the first time we rolled out some of the renditions was at the State House Festival, which was here in the city of Olympia and Marathon, excuse me, Heritage Park. And again, all of the comments that we had heard were just incredible. There was a lot of excitement. It was the first time folks were actually seeing what it was gonna look like at mean high water. And so I just think that in the seven years I've been working on this project, hearts and minds are changing and we're really doing something special, so thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to share a few comments too. And no, no, when I say this, I say it with a heartfelt love. I hope this is the last time I see this presentation. Seen it so many times. But I really want to thank the project team, Anne, Sarah, Tessa, Dave. Feel like I've really gotten to know you pretty well over this past year, being a part of this effort. And, you know, we can all see what a heavy lift this was with that, that meeting schedule. You all were very responsive to a variety of concerns coming from all of the jurisdictions. And to be able to manage a negotiation like that just takes a lot of skill, dedication, interpersonal skills, you know, and just you, you kept, anytime somebody had a concern, you kept coming back. And you kept, you know, the list of meetings that you saw on there, there were actually many more going on behind the scenes to make sure that people felt heard and felt represented and that at the end of the day, we're all coming together around this. And I also want to give a big thanks to city staff, Jay, Mark, both of you were a part of this. You mentioned Rich Hoy until he departed from the city. You know, we, we had a lot of, a lot of heavy work happening from the staff level as well. And I just, I just want to recognize just how, you know, in watching, well, being involved in this issue for over a decade now, just to see how things have changed politically, things have changed in the community. It's just, it's just incredible to see how this was a, such a divisive issue. In the CLAMP process, I think the city just didn't even really take a position because it was so hard for the community. And by the time, like, you know, the EIS was coming around, all seven of us, well, there's different folks here now, but all seven of us still agree, like, this is the path forward. All, and, you know, when I talk with the other jurisdictions who are part of this ILA, I have no concerns about, about this, making it over the finish line. And even being on one of the trips to DC and talking to some of our federal representatives, I remember being in, I think it was Senator Cantwell's office. And her staff was like, oh yeah, this is a real popular project. And I'm just beaming because it, yeah, it's, you know, to have our federal representatives like know what's going on here and see this, and see how excited the local community is around this. It's just, it's just been incredible to watch over the years. And now we're all joining hands, we're advocating together. One of the final meetings that we had around this was a luncheon out at Squawson. And Chairman Peters talked about the importance of us all having a unified front for this. Because as we go and seek federal funding and we're competing with all of the other priorities across the nation, you need, we, we, we need to all be all in to be successful in this. And that's where we're at. And it's so, so great. And I also just wanted to really appreciate the, the heavy emphasis that you all put on environmental justice here for the Squawson Island Tribe. That was less a part of the conversation a long time ago. And now it is front and center, like this is about, this is about justice for the tribe, for the salmon. And I also really love the slide about Unified by Water. Because we all, we all are, and it's Olympia, it's the water, right? And, and also Olympia is, we're a community of environmentalists. Like our community cares very deeply about the environment, about Puget Sound. And it's just such a, it's, it's just so painful to have this injustice right here in this, in the heart of our community. And so with all that, you know, just, just thank you all so much. It's so great to have such a passionate and dedicated team of folks who are helping to really, really move this forward. And I'm just, I'm just very grateful for your work. I'm very grateful for this council and our full-throated support for this. Grateful for our staff who are, you know, we're all there, everyone else is there. We just gotta go get it done, so thank you.
Great comments. Thank you, Danny, or Councilmember Madrone. City Manager Bernie.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one more round of thanks here. This has been an amazing team that has been assembled by Anne to help move this project forward. And when Anne brought us all a schedule in the March timeframe and said, we're gonna get this done by the end of the year, I think most of us said, wow, I don't know if we can get all this done. And a lot of times, and I give Anne a lot of credit for this, it'd be easy to, to do a calendar finder and see who's available. And a lot of times Anne just scheduled the meetings and said, y'all gotta come. Because there's too many of us. And, and she pushed and, and kept the calendar moving. And every, about every month, we kept saying, boy, we might get there, we might get there. And we got there with the date, I think, in mind that we all had in mind to get there, to make it happen for the end of the year. And so Anne, I just want to give you a ton of praise and credit for your leadership to get it here. And being in DC with you and watching you talk about this project, we're gonna get funded because your passion comes out for this, right? And that is meaningful to me. So thank you for your work in particular and the whole team, but.
And tears of happiness, I love this project.
Everyone's stealing all my talking points tonight.
Don't call on me.
No, you're fine. Councilmember partially.
Well, it's a turnaround because usually when you speak, I'm like, oh, I shouldn't have let Dante go first, the mayor. First, I have to acknowledge that, you know, when I served on the lot board representative, I gave you guys a lot of hard time, and I appreciate it, but I agree with everybody, wow. And to be this close to getting our ILA, I also didn't think it would happen, but it's sort of like herding cats, all these jurisdictions. So thank you. I, I think this ILA is great. Where it started and where it's ending is fantastic. And I, I just have a couple of comments to, one to the, this group and two to the city, okay? One is, I still haven't seen the connection between the Upper Deschutes Basin where the sediment is generated because that's going to impact what the costs are for the city of Olympia. And I would like to see that direct connection to that work that's going on because we're cleaning the sediment up, we're not generating it. So that, just sort of something that says we need to make a connection to that work as well. And these two have to be tied together. That would be fantastic. For the city, we have the West Bay, we have Percival Landing. We've had conversations council to council with Squawson about making our waterfront more water-friendly. I would like to put a placekeeper in our Parks Department to be looking at grants that might be available as national attention comes to this project that will drive the complete restoration of West Bay, including working with the port as they work through their process. Because I would like it a contiguous, beautiful estuary, not just ending where the dam was. And instead of a sidewalk to nowhere, because we have disjointed parks plans and port plans and everything else. But it's also a potential avenue to money to get some of this done when national attention is here. And then lastly, I guess it's really not to us, well, if this happens before I'm using a walker to go to the ribbon cutting, we're going to have to rename the Capital Lake Fair.
Yes, we will. Any additional questions or comments for our panel tonight? Mayor Proton Wen.
I also share great gratitude. I'm not going to attempt to, you know, add another layer above everything everyone's already said. It's a really, really joyous night. You know, all of you and everyone around the room, it's just everyone's just sort of lighting up during this presentation. It's really special. I just want to ask Tessa, and I've been thinking about this while you were joining in the presentation. Do you remember the first time you sat before this council in a study session like this? And how sort of deadlocked I felt like this seven that were there? Or, and we were just, we were all in on the estuary, and we were just firing off questions. You were sitting beside someone else that's not here tonight. Quite honestly, I don't think they could handle it as well as you could. And you were just like, okay, all right. And what a turnaround tonight is. Full circle.
I will never forget that night. And what I took away still is how supportive you guys were. So thank you for that note. I'm also wondering if it should be Capital Lake Farewell, maybe.
I'm just going to let that linger. I do have a question about the steering committee that you mentioned, DES, you said? Who are the representatives that make up that body?
Oh, thank you. One from each of the parties to the ILA, but they will choose their own. And each entity will choose one and one alternate to serve in the primary person's absence, but it's up to you.
And, and in our discussions, we talked about that being staff with technical expertise. So that's, somebody could choose to send an elected official or something, but that's kind of what we talked about as the, the work group is, having the technical folks at the table for that.
Okay, yeah, that was the part that was a little unclear. I'm like, what are we going to do? So, good, okay, thank you. I, what Jay just said a moment ago about watching Anne, clearly your passion for the project comes through, and, and I think that's what's needed for the moment. And it's so appreciated. One of the things I wanted to share with everyone is, is on a trip to DC, when we were meeting with the folks behind, who were part of giving the Squawson Island Tribe the NOAA grant, is they called out something that made me really proud about this project and where we live. And they said, you know, we've never seen a project like this that is designed, that focuses on the fish. Right? And they said, they, they were very impressed and very clear about that, that the project is fish-first, and then it's us, right? And then we happen to benefit from doing what the environment should do naturally, right? And so there is bike pit improvements as a result of that work. There is going to be educational opportunities that we didn't even get into in this project. But there will be an aspect of this where folks will get to learn about how this is in fact a restorative justice project that will tell the future generations about the history of the estuary and the lake, and let it be an example for urban communities across the country on what a project of this size and scale in an urban community looks like in terms of putting the environment first. And so I just so appreciate, I think all of you clearly have a passion for, for, for this work. And it's easy to just, you know, rattle your points, but I think it comes through very loud and clear that you actually care about what you're doing and you're invested as a person in this work. And so we couldn't be more thankful to you for that. I'm very, very proud to have joined Anne and the city manager, and, you know, Chris Peters and, and Ray. Peters from the Squawson Island Tribe on, to really speak to our, our federal delegation members into federal agencies about this project. And I will tell you, they, they definitely know about it. I think from what I see, there is some, a little bit of bumping elbows, and there's some familiarity there. So there is, there is a face behind this work that I think the folks in DC are, are happy to know and build a relationship with. And so I'm just so glad that I got to be a part of that, that experience as well. I do see this project as a massive environmental justice project in the heart of our downtown that will tell the story about who we are as Olympians in this city. We know that folks haven't been able to access the water for some time, and I look forward to the day where I'll definitely have more gray on my head by then. But when folks, we're looking at folks back out on the water, and we can see people accessing it, enjoying it, and, and really seeing that full circle moment, knowing that I have been a part of it and all of you that have been a part of that is, is just a really great vision of the future that I'm looking forward to. And lastly, I'll just say, you know, the, all of our partners, the historic nature of something like this, another thing that the federal, federal partners were saying is, is that, you know, they see a lot of jurisdictions that come to them, and they tell them that tribes are involved. And this is clearly a project where we can see that we're allowing the tribe to lead, lead us, show us the way, right? And do right by the salmon, and as a result, do right by the environment and by the community. And it's very, very clear to them that we are doing just that here. So proud to be with everyone, to have reached this milestone, this huge moment. We'll see what happens during the session. We've got some strong advocating to do for this next biennium to help keep moving things along. And please let us know whatever we can do to support you. So thank you all so much. City Manager Bernie.
So in terms of next steps, this will be on your consent calendar on October 8th. I might recommend that you might pull it and maybe make a comment on it, maybe from the council reps, before you, before you take a vote, maybe take a separate action on it. It's a kind of a big moment. So I'll just, I'll just plant that flag. So Anne, if you want to, you don't have to, but if you want to come back on next Tuesday night and watch the vote happen, then there you go.
It would be an honor.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, I just thought, since we're here, can we talk about the legislative session? Is there a DES decision package that we should have top of mind? And the community should be talking to our delegations about when they see them?
Yeah, it's a great question. We will have a, a budget ask for a capital budget for the state legislature this year. It's about $25 million, and that's to help us complete design and permitting. Now, of course, we received a little bit of money from the NOAA grant through Squawson, and we're going to still aggressively pursue other grants during this period of time through 100% design. But right now, we have a gap, and we really do need legislative support. So I think I'll be coming back to this fine council to see if we can't get letters of support for our budget ask. Again, we're going after state grants, federal grants. We hope to begin construction in 2027, so there's a lot of work that we need to do on both the funding side and the permitting, and we've got a pretty aggressive strategy there. I know someone mentioned this regional work that's happening. From the port's perspective and sea level rise, we are heavily engaged in all those efforts and really trying to bring forward more of a regional strategy, I believe, yeah, at least you brought that up. To, when we go to DC and other places, we're thinking about this of a regional investment. It's massive. You think of our project and it's two miles. You add the port project, it's three miles. All the ecological improvements that we're doing, the transportation side of it, the work that the port has, the sea level rise improvements with our estuary, and then add to all of the other things that are going on there. We're trying to develop connectivity in our park system, create better civic education, art, all of these things. And so it's not just an estuary, it is so much more, and that's what's so exciting. We're trying to tell that story for sure. So thank you.
Great question. Any other questions, comments? You look like you're pondering something.
When are we asking for the 350 million? That's what I'm pondering. Not the next biennium, it's 27. So we need to be asking now.
Well, Anne's got a whole packet and list of. Yes. All right. Any additional questions or comments? Well, with, oh, Councilmember Madrone.
Just want to say, I look forward to the day that we free the Deschutes.
Ditto. All right, well, seeing and hearing no more questions, thank you so much for being here. Have a great night. Hopefully, we'll see some of you back for the vote next week. So with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.